Okay, thank you Frank. Good evening everybody, welcome to Foxborough Board of Selectmen, August 12th. Actually, a special meeting that we're having this evening. With us tonight is the Permanent Municipal Building Committee. And the reason that we're meeting tonight is to discuss the progress and one of the next steps of the town hall design and approval process. So I'll open the meeting and then actually if we could, why don't we have the permanent building committee all stand up and start us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. So I'm just gonna speak very quickly on why I think we're here, just to kind of put everyone on the same page. First, I want to also thank Cable Access for the special meeting in August for coming, and the permanent building committee, all volunteers for working through the summer and coming tonight. If you recall, back in the fall town meeting, we, the town, with support of the Selectmen and the advisory committee, voted to approve what they call soft costs for the construction of the, oh, I'm sorry, for the design of the town hall project. And up till then, it was a committee that was put together to bring it to that level. Since the town meeting, the permanent municipal building committee was enacted, they grabbed the project, and they've been having a bunch of meetings with the planning departments, different staff. They've been in front of the Selectmen since the fall town meeting with the steps. And as they go, they bring it a little further, they get some approvals, they re-cost it, they redesign it, they value engineered it. So tonight, it's just one more of those steps as we go towards the town, the next town meeting. And this project's bill is a little bit different because we're actually designing it and getting cost estimates within hand before it goes out. I think in the past, we've approved a number and then kind of worked backwards, so it's a little different. So we've, in our emails over the last couple of days, we have cost estimates now, plans, some summaries, Bill handed out some stuff, so there's a lot of information. I'm not sure if we're gonna vote on it tonight, but there's no end to this. It starts at seven, there's no ending time, so we'll bring it as far as we can and see where it goes.
And again, I think to your point, the final, the way this was sold to the town is the final decision will be made with actual bids in hand. So we'll know who the general contractor, that's the low bidder, is, the sub file sub bidders are, and what the actual price, you know, of the project's going to be before we ask the town for the final number. And I think that's, as Jim said, a very different process than we've ever gone before. Usually, we ask for an estimated amount of money and hope that our low bidder is underneath that number. On the library, the only low bidder was TLT. We didn't end up with a lot of issues with them in the end, but we made it through, and we came in under budget. The other three bidders were above that estimate we had. So it is a different process. I think it's the right way to, for the town to be comfortable with what they're going to get in the end. They will virtually know everything about this building before we actually go into construction on it. So it's a good process. As Jim said, basically, you have six members of the building committee here tonight, you have the LLB represented, and as well as Vertex, which is the owner of Project Manager. It's a team that's been working together on most of this stuff through the process. We've also been obviously involved with Downtown Review Committee, who did two meetings to kind of come to their approval on what they wanted the building to look like based on their requirements within the downtown area. We moved from them to the planning board, and in both those venues, we had our civil engineers, as well as our landscape architects with us as well, to make sure that, you know, everything was represented and answered as we moved through. So we have made it through those two boards. Obviously, there've been a number of changes that they requested during the process in order to grant their approvals, and we have made those changes as well. Anywhere from the exterior design of certain items to, you know, the buffering, to sewer, you know, to drainage issues and stuff like that, all those were addressed in those, by those two groups in public meetings. And that represented five public meetings over a six-week period of time. So, you know, while the process, you know, we try to define a schedule upfront, it's not always obviously able to meet the schedules based on, again, how boards meet, and when they meet, and what the timeframes are. The critical thing, I think, from the building committee's perspective, is that we are very thoughtful in what we design, in what the purpose of the building is, and what the longevity, and hopefully, the ability for it to be somewhat flexible as time goes on, because, again, you're not building for tomorrow, you're building for 20, 30 years of use out of a building. The, as Jim did say, the initial development here was based on putting together a program of what each department needed, as well as our storage, utility, you know, areas and stuff of that nature. And in the first design, or the first scheme all the way through, obviously, we are conservative in the approach to the amount of space we need for utilities such as heating systems. And in this particular case, we used a conventional four-pipe heating system, which had the highest level of requirement for space. And when the first set of bids came in, or estimates, I should say, came in and they were higher than where, obviously, what we want to be from a town's point of view, it forced the building committee to hone in on the actual heating system, into plans to use on this, which we did do. And that saved us a significant amount of space, because now we no longer needed the basement utility area to accomplish that within our design. The other thing we did was push back to the architects and basically ask them to look through, as is in their contract to do, look through the design and say, what alternatives now do we have? We've met everybody's needs, we've designed something that's based on what everybody wants to have, the right flows, the circulation space, the amount of storage, all that, and everybody's comfortable with that, but now what options do we have to actually cut back even further, to try to bring the pricing down? And that's exactly what they've done for our second thing, and we've gotten a second cost estimate, you know, tied to the first one effectively, and reducing it. So what I'd like to do is have the architects do a presentation right now, based on what the original scheme was, which is the one that you approved back a few months ago, actually, I guess, a month and a half ago. And what we are showing now is our options to try to bring down the price and bring down the square footage within the building, and how that will impact the usability of this building.
Drayton? Julie? Thank you. Drayton Fair with LLB Architects. I'm here with Julie Bartlett, my colleague from LLB. We are just gonna walk you through the original floor plan and the new floor plan, based upon some of the changes that we've made. If you recall, the floor plan itself really hasn't changed in terms of its layout, and in terms of most of the spaces, actually. In the original scheme, as Mr. Yocno mentioned, we had a basement area which would hold the boilers for the original four-pipe system, it had the sprinkler room, it had the hot water heater, life safety room, as well as the elevator machine room. And what we've been able to do is, by changing the HVAC system from a four-pipe system to a variable refrigerant flow system, is dramatically reduce the requirements for that HVAC system. The VRF system doesn't require boilers, so we were able to eliminate a large portion of the basement, and we were able to bring the other services up to the main level with a very small impact to the rest of the floor plan. We looked at a couple of different versions of it. Again, this is the original scheme. We looked at one scheme that eliminates the basement by bringing the major services up. The elevator machine room would move up here to an area behind the existing elevator, the fire sprinkler system would be here, access from the back of the building. And we also took a look at reducing the overall floor plan by about four feet from, across the entire length of the building. So what that basically did was reduce the corridor by about a foot, reduce the rear offices by about a foot, took about a foot out of the open office spaces, and squeezed another foot out of the, out of the rest of the building.
At this point, we also, the mechanical electrical engineers had a chance to work through what the actual requirements were for some of the space, so we realized that we were providing a little more room than we needed for electrical rooms and the sprinkler room. And so, in knowing that information, we were able to accurately locate the sizes of these spaces, even though they're a little smaller than the initial scheme had had. So you'll notice that that's another reason why there's a larger reduction in those spaces, too.
On the second floor as well, that four feet came out of the overall length of the building, and we were able to squeeze some spaces to get an electric room, life safety closet, and hot water heater in the building. So this was one scheme that we had estimated.
Yeah, and so where I'd like to stop you here, so this, in the end result, this reflects basically 705 feet in program and circulation space reduced. It represents a little over 2,000 square feet in the basement being reduced. The issue that the building committee has with the reduction in what we'll call the operational and circulation space, or non-program space, is that when you really look at the plans, and I'll give, you know, I'll take Bill's office as an example, the reduction from basically 12 and a half feet down to 11 feet three, really does start to impact how that conference table would work in his room, which is a critical thing. I mean, I think all of us have met in his room when he's doing small meetings type of thing. It really starts to reduce it down to make it very difficult to get, you know, some of the furniture in these different rooms to work. Now, it does sound bizarre that a foot here or a foot there would make that much of an impact, but when you really look at some of these office spaces, we really feel that, you know, the total represented by that 705 is $157,000. So we want you to really think hard, from our perspective, we don't think it's the right move to make on a building like this, that's a long-term, you know, use building, and, you know, but it is an option that you do have. And it can be variable in any of that. In other words, in the roughly, that's closer to three and a half feet on each floor that we're gonna lose, if you said you didn't want to lose it in the hallway, but you didn't mind if you lost it in the offices, we can still make those adjustments. And that's, again, why we're waiting for your decision as to what you feel is the appropriate way to move this project forward, because it's not all or nothing. You know, you can, you can take that 705 and say, we want to keep 200 of it, or we want to keep 700, or we don't want to keep any of it. So that's why it's important you understand what we're talking about as we move through this process, so you can make your decision. The, you know, when you look at the circulation on the hallway, the original hallway was somewhere between nine and 10 feet wide. We reduced it down in our earlier stages of this process, down to eight foot three. And the, we felt as a group comfortable with that, although we obviously liked the wider one, but we were comfortable to get down to the eight-three.
Bill, I'm sorry, just to clarify, you're talking on the hallway on the first floor, not in the office?
Both floors.
On both floors?
Both floors.
Okay.
Where the counters are located.
That's what I was thinking as you come in, but you're also on the second floor?
It's not the main entranceway, the hallways are like a T shape. They come in wide where the Board of Selectmen's meeting hall will be, and then there's the branch off that goes down to all of the operational offices. That branch off is the only one we're talking about changing, and that's, you know, from the eight foot three to seven. The issue with the, with that branch off is that each of those offices that has a counter, a service counter that people can come up to, actually extends 10 inches into the corridor, because you have to have a working area for the person who's coming up, whether they're going to the town clerk, or whatever, they have a place to write, they're obviously not leaning into the office area itself. And the counter itself is probably double that width, in the sense that there's room for both sides to write or do things on. So you take a, now a seven foot wide, and you take 10 inches off of each side, you know, you're down to five foot four inches, you've got to have a person standing at the counter on each side, and then potentially somebody passing. That's a very tight corridor for that.
Excuse me, Bill, what's the width of the present corridors in the present town hall?
Nine and a half feet is your main one, in the, as you walk in, and the side ones are about four and a half, five, but they're single-sided. Okay? So there's, you know, again, a couple feet bigger, but double-sided, you know, usage as far as the program space goes. But the main one that everybody's kind of used to, that's where you got double counters on both sides, that's actually nine and a half feet. So that's why we're saying at eight-three, we're kind of comfortable, but seven feet, we're really, as a building committee, are not comfortable with that at all. So that's, that's kind of our recommendation as far as what they've shown so far.
Another, if I may jump in here as well, another piece that we've reduced out of the floor plate was some of the expansion storage space. So there, we have in here some, a couple of rooms for storage, and they got reduced when we shrunk the building by the 705, 705 square feet, and that was another thing that we thought was a little concerning for the future of the building, to have more possibility, a few extra square feet can really go a long way in the next 30 years of this building, so.
So following along, after meeting with the, the building committee, we took another review of the plan, and our charge was, was basically to restore the full footprint of the building, but continue to eliminate the basement. So I think you have a copy of these plans, so that's what these plans represent, and it's pretty simple in that we just don't take that three and a half feet out of the back. The offices are restored, the hallway is restored back to the eight foot three. Some of the space is still reduced, though, just because we've rearranged some of the, some of the minor spaces, and, you know, carved some space out for the elevator equipment room, for example. The vault gets slightly smaller because we're squeezing in the space for the sprinkler system. And as well upstairs, that storage space does get slightly smaller because we're introducing an electrical closet up in that area. So we are economizing in some places, and giving up a little bit of space here and there, but the real, the real benefit frankly, is, in the cost, is the modification to the HVAC system, which is a significant cost savings, and the elimination of the basement, which is a significant savings.
The last page basically is a program versus non-program square footage comparison. And again, I apologize for the size of this, but trying to get the information out to you. What we did is basically break it down into four levels. The original one that was done by the working group, and again, that was, you know, basically everybody's best estimate for office size, or circulation around cubicles, and that type of thing. The second one was the original plan that you approved a couple of months ago, what the square footage requirement was on that. The third one is the reduction of the 705, plus the elimination of the basement. And then the final one is the plain elimination of the basement with the space put back in. What you see is that basically, the original working group number was 15,500. If we go to the, you know, everything reduced out, we're at 15,990, and if we go to what the building committee is recommending, we're at 16,695, which is just obviously about 1,100 square feet larger than the 15. It's still obviously smaller than other plans that have been produced in the past. The, one thing I will also advise that, when you think about it, even though they, you know, it kind of shows itself in the non-program space, but the exterior walls that are actually designed into this building are 16 inches wide. When the working group was kind of doing its estimates, nobody was throwing out any kind of numbers that would, were in that range. We were actually thinking more of in the 10, you know, or so range when you did the composite buildup. But obviously, this is, you know, significantly different with the steel structure and the steel framing. So there's a couple hundred square feet that are used up in the non-program space that are in the exterior wall thicknesses. Now, because there's been concern in the past of what we are using for square foot, you know, usage, this is exterior wall to exterior wall, all right? So it's not the way the plan will be submitted to the building inspector, because that's not the way that the requirement is, but it is just so that everything's apples to apples, and nobody, you know, should have a concern with it from that perspective. I think the, probably, one of the big issues has been brought up, and actually, if, in the handout that I gave you tonight, if you look at the one that starts off with cost and square footage estimates, and you actually go to the second page of that, again, there wasn't just the square footage changes or the HVAC changes we had. You know, we, there's a number of other things that obviously are smaller pieces that make differences to the dollar factor here. The, one of the issues, as has been pointed out, is there's about 216,000 just in the cost on the HVAC system. When you add the, all of the percentages that typically get the general conditions and everything else that gets added on, you're well over 250,000 in savings by going from the four-pipe system to the VFR system. The, the other issue, again, being the, you know, reduction in the basement, you can see that's showing about 449,000, again, you add the percentages, you're closer to a half a million dollars. The general building reduction of the 705 is at 123, with the percentages, it's 157. And, and that's how with making these changes, effectively, what we have done is reduce the cost by a million three from the first estimate, which was the largest, you know, footprint, and the four-pipe system. One of the other things, and I want to be very clear on this, because I know this will come up, and I don't, nothing is trying to be hidden here, the building committee, the architects, and, you know, as a group, don't feel that really that the petitioning of the Board of Selectmen's meeting hall into a two-piece room is a wise room movement. It was in the discussions that the working group had, and, you know, the issue really with those are, and I made this at the working group comment time, was that we have eliminated them in all of our schools. They don't work the way everybody would like them to, long-term. They work usually in the beginning, but they don't work long-term. They are not sound resist, you know, soundproof, so that when you're having meetings on both sides, it really doesn't work, I don't care. You know, we've had, we've got all kinds of them, we've had at least five different versions of it in the schools, and none of them, you know, worked appropriately. And it really kind of changes the, the way that room is set up. We've never done it on any of our other large rooms, like the McGinty Room, or the large room at the library, because typically, when you're using those rooms, you're using them for bigger meetings. But if you did have a small meeting, like we do at the McGinty every so often with 10 people, so you use the room with 10 people. It's a $71,000 cost factor when you add all the percentages in, and it also really changes the interior design of that room, the way we have to make it for exits and entrances into the room. It's doable, we've done it, we've got it on plans, obviously, we don't believe in it, and so, again, we're putting that out as something to your side. It could always be done as an ad alternate in the process, if bids come in low, and you want to accept it, but even in that case, we don't, as a building committee, recommend If you go back to the first page of that program, what you'll see is, again, the working groups. Now, in the working groups numbers, you've got the Phase 1 and Phase 2 for both the architect and the project manager, their cost. Obviously, we've only approved the 557,000 so far by town meeting. The second phase for each one of those is another 444,000. Then you get into the breakdown of the actual construction cost. We did, and always had, had the abatement and demolition of the building broken out separately, so I did that for this as well. So even though we're at a 7.142 construction cost, almost 225,000, or 220,000 of that is the estimated cost for abatement and demolition. And that's why you see the 6,921 there. So it totals that same 7142, which is on the last page of this setup, but it's, you know, just broken down differently, and that was the way it was always done. And then you can see the different estimates down below. What's interesting to me is when with the working group, and I was, I think I was the only member from the building committee on that, the estimates were basically, what the estimate was done on the $450, if numbers were thrown out between $400 and $500, $450 is halfway in between, nice number to use. It was not based on anything more than that, obviously, we didn't have anything more than than that. We didn't have a professional cost estimator doing the work, and we didn't have any true designs that could be taken to a level where someone could actually do a takeoff on them. So what I find interesting is, even at the $497, which I will grant you, I still think is a lot per square footage, but this is strictly at a schematic design phase. You know, we don't have construction documents, we don't have details for you to really refine your bids and your, and your estimated cost. We're at $497, it's still under the $500 numbers that were thrown around at the time, and the, obviously, the abatement's the same. I mean, we're effectively at the same numbers we were talking about, so abatement and demolition. And you can see, again, it goes all the way back to the studies that were done in 2011, it was a 17,700 square foot building, and, you know, as I said, at this point, we're either just under 16,000, or just over 16,000, depending on, on your decision and choices. The primary or major issue, again, has been brought out, is the heating systems, and so that's why I included a report from BER, which is our engineering group for the MEP side of this building. They've been very involved with this process to date, based on the amount of information they have, obviously. We have had experience with BER just one time before in the town, and that was on the Taylor School, where we just recently did the generator system, and they did all of the designs for us, which actually worked out to be extremely cost-effective, because they came up with some creative ways of tapping into the electric that saved us a lot of money. The, as you can see, there's three options here that they give, you know, the variable error, you know, volume and reheat system is the least desirable from the operational point and the efficiency side of it. The variable refrigerant flow is a newer technology, probably in the last 10 years or so, that's been really pushed. It's older than that, but 10 years has been where it's really made its gains in the industry. And then the third one being the four-pipe chilled hot water system, very, it's a conventional system, it's what we have in many of our buildings. Ironically, the library is a combination, it's virtually a little bit of both because of the design of the building. So we're not unfamiliar with it, but it's not, you know, primarily the building heating system for the library itself. We did take, as I think we're charged with, even though we are a volunteer group, in some, one case, Bill and I and Tony Masali, the operations manager, actually went up to Brandeis. Brandeis installed the VFR system, and there are a number of major suppliers, so Mitsubishi's one, Toshiba slash Carrier is one.
Train.
Yep. So there's a number of them, so it's not like there's only, it's a proprietary system, there's only one group out there. The one we happened to look at on that particular site was a Toshiba Carrier system. It was their daycare, it was a fairly good-sized building, it was a 90-degree day, and when we went through the building, first of all, we, as a group, there was probably six of us viewing the site. We had, Vertex had their mechanical engineer with us as well, so that he could ask the questions that we might not ask. And then, you know, we had a representative from the Carrier Group there to kind of explain how that system was set up. We were standing right by the outside compressing units, there was two two-ton units, it was a 20-ton system, we're probably looking at about a 30-ton system in our case. The, standing right by, having a conversation lower than I'm talking right now, and having absolutely no issue, was one of the quietest systems I've seen or heard out there. So compared to the four-pipe system, which has a much larger chiller on the outside, very large fan units, which tend to be a lot more noisy, we've got that at the Ahearn as a perfect example, like, you can listen to them, they're, they're not a quiet type of system. So this was a much quieter system to run. When we went inside the building, obviously, it was broken up into a lot of classrooms for the younger kids to be in, big open spaces, office areas, and the controls within the building, you know, basically made it so that they could control any room to any level that they wanted, heat or cool, at the same time. We walked in, as I said, on a 90-degree day, and it was a very comfortable building to be in. So I think in the air conditioning mode, obviously couldn't test the heating mode, but in the air conditioning mode, I was very impressed with its capabilities. We then also took a ride up to the train, I'm sorry, the Carrier Training Facility, and in that case, we could actually see how everything is, is put together. You know, obviously, we didn't have the ceilings in our ways or anything, so now we could see all the piping, the wiring, how you service these units and everything. And again, I think both Tony and I came away from that one very impressed with the maintenance side of it, how easy it would be to maintain it. If you design it appropriately within the building, you have all your controls at, basically at hand-reach, and ability to work on it very simply. Again, full Again, fully controlled, whether you're in a, in a single office, whether you're in the big Board of Selectmen's Room, you know, down to a small conference room, that room itself could call for heater-electric, heater-air, based on what you're setting it at. So if you say everything was supposed to be 72 degrees, every room will be 72 degrees. They will all be operating differently, depending on the need of that room, and it works very well. And, and as Drayton says, it obviously eliminated a huge use of space, which was the big boiler room, which we typically have in a lot of our buildings. The next concern everybody would have is efficiency. The, the way the VAR system works, from an efficiency point of view, three-quarters of the year in New England, we're, you know, not in heat-only mode. We're, we're in some kind of combination between heat and air. And, you know, even in the middle of the, the winter here, we will have some rooms, because we'll have a bunch of people in a conference room, as an example, a lot of body heat, that the room basically is going to call for air conditioning, because it needs to cool down. There's just too many people for the room not to. In this particular system, when that air conditioning comes on and the, and the rest of the building is calling for heat, it's going to take the heat that it absorbs from the air-conditioned rooms and actually turn that back into energy that's then turned into the heating side of it. So you, you get a reduction in your heating side. In the fall and the spring, which are typically your turnover periods, so you're, you're, you're going to be calling and, and back and forth, depending on some rooms with windows will have more heat, and, and that way, you get a true sense where basically you are saving significantly, because now the heat that's being pulled from the AC side is being pushed into the heat side in areas that are calling for it. And in summer, obviously, you're in the AC mode, so you're not in the heat mode, so it's no real difference than a, an AC system, that's fully an AC system. It's variable speed in every aspect, whether it's the fan blower in the individual room or the compressors on the outside. The reason we kind of like the, the Toshiba one that we were looking at at the time is that the outside unit is basically, instead of a single compressor, each 10-ton unit is three compressors, so they work very much the way we've designed both the high school and the Ahearn with the big boilers, in that there's a lead-like system that they'll each run, depending on the need. And what happens there is you're very, you're much more efficient, because if you only need one of the three compressors to run, based on the calling side, only one's running. Whereas if you have the larger system, it's only one large compressor, the whole, that whole compressor is running to service, whether you're calling just a little or a lot. So we, you know, there's a lot of things that we were very impressed with. Again, it's not a system we've done a lot of work with in town, but it, from what we're seeing, it's really become a, a prime source of heating and air conditioning. And as a little bit further research, we know Stoughton just did it in their high school for all of their areas that they both heat and air condition. So it is definitely something that's starting to get out there into the public sector more.
So where in the building, where, will the compressors be?
Compressors are outside.
Outside?
Yep. They are, they're on, right now on a pad that's between the CVS and the building itself.
Okay. And they're very...
They could have literally, if we had known we were going to go this route up front, I, I could have convinced the neighbors that I could have put them right behind the building because there's no noise. It's just...
Yeah, you stand next to them, you have a conversation.
No, there'll be, there'll be absolutely no, there'll be more noise from people starting the cars in the parking lot than it's going to be from these units running.
And each room will have its own controls of each...
Yeah, each room has its own thermostat. Unless you take, you can take a group of offices, as an example. I don't think we're going to recommend this, because we kind of looked at some of the negatives to this when we did it, but you can take a group of offices and you can run it off one unit and duct down that group of offices. The, the issue really there is, as we all know, if you have three offices together, the end office, which has all the glass, has a higher heat demand or a higher cooling demand. The middle office is kind of surviving, because it's getting it from both sides, and then the, the closest office, you know, has probably a less one, because it's more in the middle of the room or the building. So you tend to have not as much control over that system, and the, the cost factor, by the time you add in the duct work required and the unit sized up and stuff, is not that much different than giving total control on each of the three rooms. So I think that's, when we looked at it, I think that, you know, you know, really will come to our end. Now, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room, we've got, that's probably the one area where we've got to make a, you know, very good decision on how we do that, because, again, we could break it up with a couple of units within the room, giving us total control in those units, or we can do the duct work in that room. That's a large, single room, and that may work better. So we're going to have to really work with the engineers and, and make sure we make the right decision on how to do that room appropriately, so that we wash the windows with, with heat or cooling and, and make the temperatures work the way they're supposed to. But I'm very confident that we can, we'll get that room to be the way we need it to be.
So why don't we, is that it for the, the presentation, Bill?
That's our, yes, that's our information.
So why don't we do some question and answer, and where is it? A public meeting, we'll open it up, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to ask questions. But I ju, I want to make sure your presentation's not incomplete, because you've talked about the building, HVAC, everything inside, but the outside stuff, the site, the layout materials, grading drain, all that, building facade, you've brought that to a certain level with the planning board, but was there an effort for value engineering or consideration?
So what we, what we told the architects, and I, I believe this unless, again, unless you direct us differently, and that's why we're here. To get to where we are right now, the downtown design review committee basically weighed in significantly on the exterior look of the building. Their approach to the cupola on the roof was non-negotiable. Their approach to extending the brick down the sides of the building, so that the, you know, everything you could see was going to be brick, was non-negotiable. The pulling of the front entranceway out to make it more prominent in, in its look was non-negotiable. Changing some of the, the design over the Board of Selectmen's and the windows, and these were all things that, as far as they were concerned, if you didn't do these things, they were not going to accept it as a design for what they expect to be downtown, in the downtown district, and as a colonial design. I believe Mr. Green went as far as to say, you're not going to cheap this out, you're going to do it the right way, and if it costs more, it costs more. I told him, I noted that, and we'll remind him down the road. So that, they went through that. Again, when we went to the planning board as the next stage, they have their say. And in their say, basically, part of it was landscaping and buffering between us and the neighbors, fully understandable, but it's non-negotiable. It's written into their agreement with us. They asked for some changes in drainage design. Again, you know, our civil engineer redesigned some of the drainage, so we would do a recharge on the site, a little bit more than it was originally planned to. Additional sidewalks, we had one coming off the corner of South Street and Liberty Street. They asked for two coming off, one from Liberty Place and South Street, both going up to the parking lot itself. They required lighting that's shielded. Now, we, you know, would do that anyways, I think, as good neighbors, but it's written into their agreements, so we don't have much that we can change there. And they asked for a lighting control, so that we could basically make sure that we let the building, you know, or the outside lighting go down when it's not in use, and not to interfere with the neighbors' enjoyment of their property. So they really, for us, we don't feel that we have the ability to make those changes unless everybody says, oh, throw it all to the wind and go back and show brand-new presentations to all of them. I still don't see them accepting something different, because they were very adamant in their requirements for what they believe this building should be.
Okay. And, and the last question on the big picture is, the contingency seemed to stay the same, I think. So when you look at the unknowns, a lot of it is, if you go underground, ledge, and, but where you're taking the basement out now, you still kept that contingency?
Right.
So it's a little bit of a, a safety factor?
But this, yes, and this is, and this is, again, the building committee's been doing this for a long time, so I think we're pretty comfortable with the processes that we use. You've got basically between contingency and a cost escalator, which I think, you know, the need for cost escalator, when you're only a few months away from bidding, is not really there, but between the two of them, it's 10%. That has been the standard percentage when you're at schematic design, for as long as I've been doing this, and I think it's probably, he's been doing it a hell of a lot longer than I have, so, you know, I think that's kind of your standards there. As far as, once you actually get to construction documents that have now been firmed up, typically you'll drop to two, between 5 and 7%, because you've taken a lot of the mystery out. Now it's no longer a picture, it's actually full documents as to what each piece of this building looks like. And then, once you actually get into the final bids and a contractor gives you their bids, again, typically it can drop down to, you know, between 2 and 1/2 and 5%, because now the only mysteries are, when you go into the ground, are you going to find something? Or did you miss something on your design plans, and therefore you're, you're going to have to pay in a change order? So the construction contingency always morphs down as time goes on. Now, I will also say, it is very possible that during the construction, you know, document staging, you find something that the estimator missed or whatever, that actually increases the cost a little. That can happen, okay? But that's, again, just in an estimate phase. The reality here is, no matter what we do with the three estimates that are going to come out, and no matter what they come to, the end result is strictly what the bidder's bid. So you could have a bidder coming in on this on $9 million, and you could have somebody coming in at $7.2 million, and it won't be the first time in this town that that's happened. So, you know, these are estimates, it, it gives us the gauges and the, and the reasons to make adjustments to the plans as we move through the process, but they're not guarantees of the amount that this will come out to.
All right. Questions from the board?
Thank you for the presentation. You guys have done a great job. Appreciate it. Just a couple of things. You talked about the Selectmen's Meeting Room, and that, those seats are, they're not fixed, right? They're, they're, okay. And also, if we eliminate the, the basement, I know the basement, you were going to put mechanicals down there and everything, but there will all, would also be space. There was not going to be any space...
Well, there would be space, but you could never use it for anything else by the building code. So it couldn't be used for storage.
Storage, okay.
It couldn't be used for anything of that nature, because we weren't putting an elevator going all the way down to it, which would be required. It was strictly going to be allowed to be used for mechanical space. So that's a very critical point, and I'm glad you picked that one up, because it never had any other use than that mechanical space requirement.
Okay, and that, that was my question. I mean, we all know, you accumulate things over the years, and then you've got to put it someplace, and it always winds up in the basement. If we don't have a basement, and if the, and if the rest of the building is pretty, pretty tight in what you're doing, does the town have a place for miscellaneous storage of like desks or, you know, file cabinet? I mean...
Well, you typically wouldn't, and we don't typically end up, I mean, the schools do, but that's just because we have so many rooms. But you don't typically end up with, like, need for furniture space, because you, you know, you build a building like the Ahearn, as an example. I mean, what I have in spare furniture there is, is extremely limited, because you built it and put in the furniture day one that was really required for the, the space you were going to use. Typically, what will happen is you might have an area where you have four cubicles, and then all of a sudden, you have to figure out how to get a fifth one in there. So you're adding, but you're not subtracting. We feel pretty comfortable that, that between the amount of space that we've got, you know, in the building now, the fact that that new study has been done that reduced the storage significantly, 55%, I think was the number, or... So all that space that we, where we had stuff just piled on, we had three and four copies of things, well, obviously you don't need that. The other side of it is, what I would suggest would be going with the smaller, with the plan that requires the, some of the things to be moved up and reduces the vault space, I would say we would do the exact same thing we did with the Joint Public Safety, and that is, in their records room, we have high-density filing systems, which basically take a fraction of the space to, to, you know, basically support additional filing. They collapse on each other, very common on a first floor, it'd be no big deal for us, because we'd be on a concrete floor to start with, so your weight load's not an issue. So we can, we can actually get more out of the vaulted space, which is, the vaulted space, even though it's not as large as what the working group came up with, is still larger than what we have today, by quite a bit, actually. And so that shouldn't be our issue. We do have, again, when you look at most of the offices, we have plenty of room for the filing cabinets that have been, you know, requested, and to the point where I think you'll have more storage there than you, you know, might have in the need for the day one in the process, but as you grow, obviously you use more of that. We still have two spaces in the building, one up on the second floor in the, well, in basically, it's in the planning room, that's an office that we don't have a, you know, use for currently. It's got a doorway between that and the building inspectors, it could be used for storage if, if that's necessary. And there's another space just like that on the first floor, which is, is your open space. So you've got some areas, whether they become a needed space for, you know, a person to operate out of, or just for storage. Again, we've kind of incorporated that in our design upfront.
Just a thought on that, because we had a similar scenario in my last job, where there was no system for, for storage. So when you develop a system, you end up with probably keeping about three years' worth of records on-site, and the rest of it you can ship offsite, which offsite storage is much cheaper, by the way, than, than, than anything we could build. And the use of that space is, and that's actually a much more common approach nowadays. Then it's all, it's all computerized, all, we know where the records are, because it's all basically written in the system itself.
I would say, yeah, I would say you also find, I mean, obviously, the schools are 100 years old as well, and, you know, you do get into, you should get into a normal retention removal system, and we're very good at it, because otherwise, we could generate more paper than, than, you know, you could choke a horse on. So we know, you know, some records have to be kept seven years, on the eighth year, they're gone. Some records have to be kept three years, on the fourth year, they're gone, because there's no need to just keep building and building and building. And that is, when you have a lot of space, that's what people do. It's like, well, I don't have to work about, I don't have to worry about that right now, I'm just going to put it in a box and put it downstairs. Well, that becomes a problem long-term, because sooner or later, someone's going to have to look at that box and figure out what it is. So all of our boxes are labeled, what the destroy date is, you know, what the item is, and I think you just need to be in that cycle, and most places can survive on that. The one exception to that, quite honestly, is your building department, which needs to keep plans and records for a much longer period of time. More and more of that's going digital.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my, I had a concern about storage, but also, also, how many extra office, offices do we have? And the reason I'm asking that is when the present Town Hall was built, we didn't need, we didn't have a veterans agent, we didn't have a planning board. I don't know if we had a Board of Health, and all of a sudden, over the years, those offices are mandated. I mean, do we have enough, do we have enough office space for the future? Because you don't know what's going to come down the pike, but you know, you know things are going to be coming down.
Well, and, and again, this is where, you know, you could always build more offices, which is just going to add to your square footage. This is where we took the tact of the two office spaces that are the extra ones in this plan, and I believe there's two cubicle spaces that are extra in this design. You know, guessing that we need bigger than that, you know, we couldn't get there. And, but to your point, we're not going in day one with no space to be able to sit somebody or deal with an issue, or, you know, to grow. We're not, we're not going in with a lot, I'll, I'll be honest with you, but, but again, I think that's, that's our, our, you know, responsibility, is to, to figure out a manageable number and say that's what we're willing to put our, our hat on.
I mean, down the road, say, 20, 25 years from now, where the Selectmen's Meeting Room comes out, would that be possible if, if we had to put a second floor on that? I mean, with the, the way you're building it now, would it, would it support a second, a second story down, you know, 25 years from now, or something like that?
Well, I think we, and, I guess I would ask...
The short answer to that is no, but we can modify the design to structure the roof as a floor, and that would make that transition easier. But something that Drayton has pointed out in the past is that codes change, and so the requirements for flooring, a floor system 20 years from now, might be greater than what we designed it for to code right now. So it's a risk that we take if we design, because it would be a higher cost to design the roof as a floor and add tapered insulation versus flat insulat, the, the whole cost of the roof structure would be significantly higher to prep it for a floor system that is not used as a floor, as of right now. But it's certainly something we can consider, if that's important to the town.
Yeah. That was a, quite, actually, that was a question that was, that was brought up, you know, looking down, looking into the future.
Well, I think that, you know, when you look at some of the buildings in town, first of all, you know, the, all of the other buildings joint that, that we've done, the Ahearn, the Joint Public Safety, the Ahearn probably is the one exception, because we built a significant amount of, of spare space in that building, with, you know, areas in the hallways that actually can be closed off to classrooms if we ever needed to go that route. We do use it now for other things, which actually works out very well for us, as far as the educational side of it, but all the other buildings basically are built with the same concept that we've done with the Town Hall, which is a few rooms, a few cubicles, and that's it, as far as the growth. The, the, I would say the positive side is the foundation could be designed to hold the weight, so that you don't have to go into the ground. That's a minor change in the actual design, but as Julie said, the real thing there is But as Julie said, the real thing there is if you're going to really do that, so that all you got to do is peel the roof off, then you're going to put a full, you know, steel structure, you're going to probably pour a concrete deck. Because otherwise, what good is it? I mean, you know, you really can't do it without coming back to pour that at a later date. So you're, you're going to up the cost pretty significantly for something you're not sure that you'll use. And furthermore, that could actually not even be the right code in the future when you need to use it.
But, but in, in the future, could, if you build it the way now, like,
Not grand public.
You couldn't, you couldn't retrofit it or?
Well, but let's say the code says that, you know, right now, I'm just going to throw a number out because it's not going to be right. But, you know, you have to be able to hold two hundred, you know, pounds per square foot. And the code in the future is two hundred and fifty. Well, the only way you're going to do that is beef up the steel or put additional supports in the middle of the board selectmen's room. Coming down. So it, it's that type of thing that would happen to you more than likely that you have no control over and you have to meet the current code at the time in that area that you're, you're building.
One of the things, one of the reasons we say this is because a lot of buildings were built in the past with a possibility of putting a second floor on, for example. And it was the seismic code, the earthquake codes that changed significantly that won't allow you to do that anymore. But that's not to say that, you know, in the future, you couldn't take that area and the demolition cost for the selectmen's meeting room would probably be relatively small compared to, you know, if you're going to be building another two-story addition to the building in that location. That, that could be done. There's a little bit of area, frankly, between the end of the building and where the cistern is, where we have a terrace right now that's sort of designed into the site plan, that conceivably you could probably add, you know, twenty, thirty, maybe, maybe forty feet to the, to the building if you just elongate it in the future. So there, there's a little bit of room on site to, to, for, for future expansion. And, and, and as I said, that area where the selectmen's meeting room is, you know, we could develop that or it could be developed in the future as a two-story wing. And again, just by frankly demolishing it and rebuilding it in the same place, it'd probably be the most cost-effective.
Thank you.
So if you're here twenty-five years ago, from now sitting here.
I don't want to tell you, call me up and say, why didn't you, blah, blah, blah?
Go through your desk. All right, David?
Bill, can, can we just walk through the numbers?
Sure.
On the actual costs. Between seven thirty-one on your August third. Obviously, the, the original estimate was seven-two. We're up to eight-one. Adding back in the seven hundred and five square feet, which I agree with, by the way, brings it up to eight-three. Then on the back, then on the, I guess it's page three, you have a number just under seven-three.
Right. So if you add up on the front page, the six-nine-twenty-one and the fifty thousand and one-seventy, that equals the one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, one forty-three on that back page? Again, it's just broken out to, to pull out the abatement cost and the demolition because that's the way the working group did it in its numbers. So that equals that, and then obviously you'd have to add the one-fifty-seven back in to, to get to the one-three. The eight-three also includes, which the back section doesn't, the back section is strictly construction and general conditions. The front one then adds back the architectural and the OPM cost.
Okay. So it's about a one-point-one million dollar difference.
Right. I will also say, I, I think the, the economic conditions have changed.
Yeah, that was my next point. I mean, from the time we started this, a year and a half ago, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing it right now. Construction costs are up anywhere between fifteen and seventeen percent. And that's on top of oil at historic lows, which impacts a lot of materials.
Right.
So it's all labor.
Right.
So.
And, and, you know, we, actually, you know, obviously we do the best we can to test that when we start to see these kind of numbers that don't make sense to us. And, you know, I think Bill Buckley put it best. He, you know, he's, he says, I bid very conservatively typically on my projects that I'm going to do. And he's saying that he's seen himself in, in a lot of cases being off by ten percent in a very short period of time. That's, that's very unusual. In talking to both, and I think actually John probably could speak to this from Vertex, on what they're seeing on just recent bids that they're, you know, and estimates that they're dealing with on other projects. John?
We are seeing in the market right now, just what you're saying. You know, typically the cost estimators have been, you know, very good at giving you numbers that are in the middle of the pack. So that on bid day for years, you would be happy, you'd get five to ten percent back. In the last six or seven months, it's almost unprecedented. They're either right at or over. So we've been questioning whether or not we keep getting numbers. I mean, we had a job, and we're doing a job in another town right now where in four weeks, there was another X percent escalation. Like, what's going on here? So some of it is hopefully a little bit of the estimators being nervous and starting to be conservative. They get burnt a few times. Now their numbers are up higher and hopefully now they're starting to get ahead of it. But, you know, escalation, we were typically seeing three to four percent a year. This year, ten percent, and we're being told, you know, for school-type projects, put another ten percent for next year. Whoa, what's happening? So what's, what you see happening here is not specific to Foxborough. It's, it's just a part of the, part of the problem in the marketplace right now.
Yeah, it, I mean, we're, we're seeing it in the, in the private sector too. So I will tell you, we've had very good success with our VRF, VRF systems. We use Daik McQuay. And we've used cassettes, we've used vertical units, ducted units, senior housing, one hundred and twelve thousand square foot facility. And we're actually doing another eighty thousand square feet with it. So I'm happy to see that because it's, on, on the construction end, you save a, a ton of money without having to do all the, all the sheet metal. And the ducts, and, and for comfort and having the flexibility, it's definitely a good way to go.
You're going to lose it quality.
Yeah, yep. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, a few things. I was actually going to touch on the numbers that David did, so that's all cleared up. The, the building that your committee is proposing is no basement, original square footage, correct?
It's no basement with the, few of the mechanicals being pushed upstairs and, but staying within the original square footage of that upstairs.
Okay, okay. And the square foot cost of that's four-hundred-and-ninety-seven?
Four-ninety-seven for the, yeah, for the actual square footage plus the, the cost of demolition.
Okay, and on your project timeline schedule here, you're looking at late February, special town meeting?
Yeah, and again, you know, this is all predicated on the approvals that we're looking for right now. I don't know where I put it. Yeah. Obviously, the stuff that you see in green through seven-thirty-one has, has been done, so we're past that. So, you know, again, tonight's meeting, if there's not a final vote, then obviously everything will adjust a little bit to that. One of the things is that even though we could potentially be out to bid earlier in the end of two thousand and fifteen, the reality is it's going to be right around the holidays. We're potentially going to lose people not being, you know, aggressive or looking for things. So really what we're, we're proposing here is to go out right at the very end of December so that, you know, when they're all coming back to work, their, the, the bid requirements are in front of them and, and, you know, we hopefully get a better and larger group to bid on it. We have seen this in the past where if you do it too close to a holiday, you really kind of, you know, lose it. Because someone didn't open up an email or they were away or whatever, so it happens.
Okay.
I'll say, Chris?
I am.
You know, I've, obviously I've spoken to Bill a little bit about this and I've had the luxury of, I know LLB's work and Fogarty's work. The escalation over the last three or four months, maybe a little bit longer, is, is, it's not baffling because you know why, why it's happening, but it's unavoidable and it's the private and the public sector. So the design is, is very, it's not conservative. It's, it's tight. It's tight. And, and I know you guys went through the bubble diagrams of future expansion and stuff. There's not a lot of luxury in this town hall, despite a lot of the discussions in the press and, you know, over the last couple of years. This is not a grandiose plan. It's, you build it and you fit in there and it is what it is. It's going to be a nice-looking building, but there's no extra rooms, there's no extra square footage. Even the site is, is, you know, it's adequate, not grandiose. So I want to be able to move this as fast as I can because I don't think the economy's going to get any better with respect to the bidding environment. We have one member that's missing today and we did get a lot of information. But I, I, we're going to open it up to see if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak. But I think now's the opportunity. If we're going to start hitting these dates, you know, August twelfth being today, the next one you have is October seventh. And that's complete design development, cost estimate, and then it goes right into, you know, December. There's not a lot of time on this as well, even if we push it out a little bit. So if there's any apprehension or pushback on any of this stuff, and it's not too late to go backwards a little bit. If there's something that you feel strongly about, I'd rather have it aired now. And again, thank you for cable access. We intentionally made, even though this is a special meeting, this is broadcast. Hope people take the time to see it, that we're not trying to, you know, there's no hidden agendas or hidden things here. This is what it is. So if, if there's people at home that has legitimate questions, email the board. You know, you can, you can put it in the newspaper and write editorials and stuff, but get the bang for your bucks, send it to us. We'll work with you guys. We'll send it to you, send it directly to you guys. But get it in now. This is moving forward. And I'd rather have this stuff in the design development process to LLB so we can address it. No questions, a dumb question or a stupid question, but I'd rather have it a, a serious question that we can address before it's too late, so.
I think you make one very important point there, Jim. There have been over fifteen public meetings since we signed the contract with LLB to move forward in December. So this is, there is nothing hidden. There's no hidden agendas. There's no, there's nobody on the building committee that will work in this building in the end. So this is really, you know, we're trying to move this forward as fast as we can. We're trying to be very thoughtful in how we move it forward as far as making sure we look at every, every component. I'm sure some people will say we don't listen to them, but I think we've listened to a lot, the, those people during the process. And we have made changes based on their recommendations through the process. So we're not doing this in a vacuum, to your point. I think this has been a very open process and hopefully will continue to be until we're finished.
So back to the, the process, the planning boards reviewed it and approved it. You've got a, an approval. No conservation, no board of health, really. Zoning board, no variances still? No special permits that haven't been addressed?
Under the town district, under the town, you know, center of district, we, we, we met with all of the requirements there.
Okay. So once you get our approval, then it goes back to the design development, construction documents, go out to bid. All that stuff comes together, then the town basically has all that information. They either say, yes, we want to build it, or no, and we're either back to square one or we walk away from it.
Right, and I think that's important as to why the timeframe is, is a little off and, and the architects, you know, I'm sure will attest to this probably not happily, but they've been put on hold until we get past the board of selectmen on your final recommendations. Because if I allowed them to go forward at this point in time, they would be doing those construction documents and potentially have to change them, which is going to cost us money. So we're being very wise in, in the use of our, you know, resources that we've already, you know, you know, accepted as far as going forward. But we don't want them just spinning their wheels to, to turn around and say, okay, you got to redesign it because we just made this change. And at this point, taking a foot out of a building changes steel documents, it changes floor documents, it changes pretty much every document that there is in, in the process. So, you know, we just really, you know, once you do give the approval as to what you're comfortable with, then they can actually move. But until that, no one's moving.
So what's on the table now is everything that we've seen, the outside, even though we're not seeing it tonight, doesn't change.
Doesn't change from your last approval.
We have two alternates in our package. One is the screening, the petition in the, in the meeting room. And you want some feedback on that? We don't have to vote on it.
Not only that's worth the seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's something you could always do after the fact anyway.
Well, I'm going to warn you on that. It's kind of hard because you would have to design your, your ceiling systems to be able to support it. And, you know, we would have different options. If it's not there, we could do, you know, some side soffits and things like that to make the room kind of dress better, but also potentially to hold our ductwork. Whereas if it is there, then we have to be very, you know, connected to that because it will change, you know, or influences our heating systems and stuff like that. So knowing that one, I don't think that's as easy just to add later. You'd have to, you know, really make a decision on that one. The other one, as Jim pointed out, there was two of them there. It's called the vault pre-action sprinkler valves. Basically, the, the system was originally designed with a dry system for the vault area. And it's not really necessary. It's not by code. We don't feel that we would need it. We just would cage the, the units, you know, so that they're protected internally. Don't even need a sprinkler system, I don't believe, in the vault because it's, it is a fireproof area. So we, you know, we have options there, but if everybody felt very strongly at the very end that they, they wanted to have a, an added system, we could do that. That, that can be changed, you know.
So why is that an option if, if the building committee doesn't think it's prudent, it's not a code issue? Why, why did it appear? Just because it's always been?
It's always available.
It's always available.
It's always an option in that type of a space. In the, at the joint public safety building in the area where all the records are, it's a regular water system. So it's, you know, but again, I mean, you cage things. I mean, we have that in every building we have. If we have sprinklers, right now they're, most of them are just caged off so you don't just hit it. And this is not like on TV where if one goes off, they all go off in the building. Sprinklers only go off when the tube itself breaks or melts in that area. So I, probably one of the worst things on TV that, that drives me crazy every time. You know, the sprinkler basically is, the heat in that area will open the valve for that sprinkler in that area. So a room all the way on the other side of the building is dry when the sprinklers go off.
In that vault room, it's just the vault, there's nothing else?
No.
All right, so today, Wednesday, the twelfth, we've got another meeting next Tuesday, the eighteenth. We'll put this on the agenda. John will hopefully be back by then. We can have a discussion. You won't be here. All right, so now's your chance. Anything else?
No. I mean, I would definitely be more comfortable. We got, what Jim said earlier, we got all of this documentation twenty-four hours ago, something, an hour ago. At least to sit on a week, go through it, listen to any, you know, residents' concerns or issues.
Okay, you guys okay with that? Is there anyone from the audience or the public that would like to speak? Of course. Dick?
Be remiss in attending and not saying something you all know.
Just so I can gauge it, is there anyone else, just so we can see on time, to one, one other person? Okay, sure.
I, I think we're at an excellent point in the process as far as we've gone to date. I was going to start with the finances, but I'll let that hang for a moment. There are other issues I, I think that are far more important that we fully understand, both you, the building committee and the public, what the, what has occurred in the process. We, we heard about the cuts. The working group made two thousand square feet in cuts, yet the building ended up a thousand square feet bigger than the old building, even with those cuts. We have since made other cuts and deletions which haven't been highlighted. Let me just give you a, a couple of them very quickly. The spec called for three conference rooms with the divisible walls plus the, the, the main meeting room with a divisible wall. It also spoke during the working group about the offices having space so the, the office people could have groups in their office and not tie up the conference rooms.
Dick, can I just, just for clarity, when you say the spec showed this, what spec are you talking about? Is this the program that was developed before the permanent building committee came into being?
Well, there, there, there are several specs, but the, in the, in the business, the program is known as the spec. If it's a school, it's a net spec.
Oh, no, I understand that, but who came up with that spec? Was that your spec on the, on the last committee that was there or this spec that's changed?
The working group came up with a revised spec off of what KBA came up with initially in their report. The difference was two thousand square feet, but the question was, where was this two thousand square feet? And I, I think you have to be fully aware of this, as does the public. The big discussion came on the storage components, the file cabinets and what have you. The file cabinets that are listed in, in the spec, only two-thirds are, are shown on, on the plan. Where, where's the other third? The big storage areas, which were supposed to be eight hundred and five hundred square feet, the archival as well as the vault, are now down to two-eighty-eight and two-ninety-two. So we're five hundred versus thirteen hundred square feet. So we're five hundred versus thirteen hundred square feet. The mechanical spaces are gone with the basement gone, that wasn't a big issue. That wasn't space, working space, occupied space, and what have you. The offices, strangely enough, one looked at the spec between the original spec and the new spec and said, gee, the offices are grown. They haven't. There's a hundred square foot growth shown between the, the two specs. So I consider that insignificant in terms of where we are. But now, to turn around and cut into these offices, cut into the other areas, begins to impact not only the storage component of the building, which is near non-existent or incomplete. And the question of, is there enough area, as one of you mentioned, for the future, in, in terms of putting people here, there, and the other place? I think you have to recognize these cuts very seriously, in terms of what their impact has been, and what the impact of cutting the building back is, is going to do to, to this whole operation. I feel comfortable with the offices either way. I, I think from the point of view of operation, my office, when I, I ran a company, was smaller than, than half the offices that, that are shown. But that, that isn't the issue of what I had or what you had. It's a question of what is needed for the town, as we go through it. There are other questions in, in terms of the, of the storage and vaults. How do we answer that question? Do we stick with a three, three-year limit on boxes in the basement? What, what do we do with six hundred square feet of storage components that we have up there now, when the storage in this building's only gonna be two hundred and ninety-two square feet? You know, this, this becomes quite a, a question in, in terms of condition. We have space at the senior center, we have twenty-one hundred square feet at the DPW, which their spec originally didn't call for. Maybe we can use that space. But there, there's no explanation of how we're gonna get around this stuff and, and make it work long, long term. Everyone says, well, the computers will take care of everything. You know, they'll have robots that'll then build robots, and they won't need us anymore. You know, this is the, the kind of, of, of action we're getting into. The folding wall, let me just diagram something up here. It, it is shown as an L-shaped element. There's a, a cavity wall system right off the lobby. Why not stack it at this point? Put it straight across and put a door in the lobby coming in at this juncture to hit the other part of it? Not have a partition that goes across and across and over, that's a difficult partition. If it goes straight across from one side to the other, you're home free. And the question is, it doesn't tie anything up in the, in that area. I think we need to look at stuff like that in terms of, of the approach. The building design itself, I know Jack was here, he took off. But there's a real question, I think all of us have to look at this, including the architect. How does this stair work with the window pattern around here and that lobby by itself? Just think of the space. It's this wide, and it goes down to the, the fire extinguisher. The middle section of that is the vestibule. Where, where Jenny is, is the stair coming up to the landing, landing coming up. There are windows here. The stairs is against the window. You know, as you're looking in from the outside, you see this stuff going all over the place. You can't use the area under the stair till you hit this corner, headroom. So you have this little corner, which is isolated, this other little corner, the rest of it is corridor. Double height, beautiful space, and it keeps light. I'm concerned the stair doesn't work, and you need to do something on that stair. To get it out of the area of just crossing the window, otherwise eliminate the windows. You know, there, there are all kinds of options there that can be put in. What I've heard about is this element as an appendage, or it's known as a wart as well. And the question is, in terms of the symmetry and the uniformity of colonial design, how does that fit? And the question that's been raised by, by many people, maybe that there's another solution. Add eight feet to the building, somehow slide this around the corner, get it more uniform, more symmetrical, and, and get it to work. I, I have feelings both ways on this, but I've heard a lot of flack on this, that you have this nice building with the columns, and you had this thing on, on the right. Oh, Jenny was questioning something in, in the past. Forty years ago, when the building was built, it was a large office area where Bill's is now, which was the visiting nurse service. There was another state agency where the water and sewer was, which moved out. So we had space built in for these other agencies that were operating. Can this happen in this area? I don't know, but that's up to you to resolve at this point. But it wasn't as simple as we had a building and we could just grow. Visiting nurse left, the other state agency left. It was one of the welfare kinds of things that were in there that occupied half of that upstairs. The last issue, it's maybe the most important. Of course, ransom prints. But the one thing I think we have to keep in mind, the November vote said fifteen thousand five hundred, for seven-two, in a September town meeting, to take care of it. But the seven-two was listed as total, total project cost. These costs are not included in any handout that you received tonight. These costs are right off the KBA charts, which listed the other costs, the owner's costs, contingencies, furnishings, testing, fees, and what have you, that are not included in the, in the seven-point-one or the eight-point-four. I think you need to look at this, and look at it very seriously, because you're telling the public, it's seven, it's ten. I don't care how you fudge it, it's ten or eleven, and with the interest, it's even above that. And you're gonna have to deal with this in a very serious manner before this thing goes too far. The other paperwork is more incidental. It more or less copies what Drayton in his office has done. The takeoffs within the building and what have you, I do it a little differently than they do. But there's several ways of doing this. We do it as architects because it's necessary. That's why they did it at the same time. This is the second page, but it's sorta useless at, at this point. So I might suggest, the first sheet I handed out gives you the cost structures. If you look at the handout that you got, it says clearly at the bottom, furnishings are not included. The big estimate, I gotta sit down a minute.
You will.
The big estimate does not cover hazmat removal, which is a requirement of the demolition work. I went through their twenty-six-page estimate in detail. It's a beautiful estimate, it has five and a half pages on electrical. I've never seen as fat an estimate on electrical as in that document. But of course, heating only had one line, so it compensated for one another, I guess. But these numbers are right from the, the 2011, 2012 process, which need to be added to the seven-point-one, no matter how it's figured or, or how it's concocted. The second handout is a takeoff, which copies in a different manner what LLB has done. But it gives you the square footage differentials between the original plan and the two plans that have come up now, plus the, the two spec sheet numbers for those things. It's very interesting in and of itself. And probably the most interesting is the middle bracket on, on the front page, which indicates that the other items, instead of ranging in the three thousand plus because of the cuts that are being made, but the elimination of the storage and the mechanical and electrical areas being dropped tremendously down, are in the two thousand range for, for that section of work. So you can begin to see where cuts have been made, where they haven't been made, what areas are much larger than, than the spec, or, or some are fairly close to the spec in the office areas alone. And then again, on the back of this, it'll give you the stairs, the corridor, and what have you. And if you, you look at the corridor and stair, and you, you look at that main entrance and what have you, the other program had a single stair in it. Well, it originally had two, but they knocked off the second stair, because it was redundant. Do we need two stairs? Maybe, it'd be nice to have two, maybe. But maybe this is part of the question that we need to get into. Why do we need stairways totaling fourteen hundred square feet with the, the, the new plans, compared to three hundred and sixty square feet for the KBA plan back in 2011, 2012? It's the size of the main entry, the lobby, the vestibule, and what have you, that I think we have to look at seriously before we conclude any action on this. The bottom of, of the second page will give you the deducts, that were, were not the two thousand that were voted by the working group. But you'll notice we eliminated an animal room, the meeting rooms are cut, archival storage is cut, the vault, the mechanical, electrical, and so on, have all been cut. There's a fifteen hundred square foot difference there, which is part of the reason why that second plan is down to three thousand feet from the, the eighteen-nine, eighteen-seven number on, on the left. But, but these are gross numbers for each department as you go through them. The last sheet, the eleven-by-seventeen, will, will give you detailed numbers on what the, the spec had called for, for the offices, how the offices were either larger or smaller, the, the other spaces, the file spaces, and what have you. But maybe in conclusion, there's one issue that never was resolved in the working space. If you look, look at that edspec, or the spec itself for it, you'll see file, file cabinets carried at three square feet. Well, that's the, the one foot, three inch width times the two foot, four depth gives you three foot, but that's net area. You can't take twenty file cabinets and, and put them in, in the net area in open drawers. You need the space for the drawer, you need the space for the aisle to move people and cabinets and other things around. So one of the problems we ran into is, we enlarged slightly the file cabinet size, but we never left room for the access and, and the, the ability to move against the files with other furnishings that, that we have. Half of them can be stacked on one side of an existing corridor, but that corridor has to be wider. And it changes the, the whole image of, of the process that, that you need to look at. The big thing, if I can just summarize, I, I think we're, we're moving in a good direction. I'm just very nervous about the, that front entry, how that stair works, and what have you. You know, I, I can sit with Drayton and, and give him such, such thoughts. Let's move the elevator over, put the toilets on the other side here, and get a stairwell in here connecting at this juncture. You know, we, we can move this chair, this stair down. There are all kinds of things that can be done. I'm just suggesting something needs to be done, because to look at the side of a stair through the two windows on the side and in the front, you're up here seventeen steps, that, that's about nine feet. The window, is it over nine feet? Are we gonna see this stringer on, on the stair all the way across the front? These are issues. And this is the heart of the building, the visual image, and this needs some heavy, heavy work. And I, I'd like to leave it at that with you. I, I think the, the committee has gotten into it. I'm a little concerned that it, it's gonna take till February. As we said when we talked about the, the schedule for a late September town meeting, someone brought up, it's impossible, it's not impossible, to make the September late town meeting, if we had moved in a different manner. We've done it in, in business. What I said was, it's not impossible, it's improbable. Well, we're in the improbable stage, and I think now, if we can move and move judiciously and productively, I think we, we can make January or February. It also cuts out favorably that we aren't moving into winter construction. We know what happened at the fire and police station, Bill can still smile at that, you know, but that's it. I, I just wanted to make these points here, important points, and I, I think it, it's critical that, that you look at the cuts, where the cuts have been made, where they will be made continually, and what the impact has been. Storage, movement, seven-foot corridor doesn't bother me in the least, one-sided. All the counters are on one side. If you had counters on both sides, I'd be very nervous. You know, here's seven feet. Do you have a problem with a counter? Just think about it, it's not an issue in my book.
Dick, can I ask you a question? The, the layout that they're proposing, square footage-wise, is that too big, too small? It sounded like you were saying, we need more space, more space.
No, I, I don't say more space, more space. My, my practice was one in which we were cutting buildings down continually, and making other kinds of spaces within them. As Bill pointed out, and someone else pointed out at the Ahern School, we, we left open areas off of corridor, which were sort of conference or, or rest areas, which, if needed, we had one, two, three, four, six classrooms we could add. You know, we built in that, that additional capacity with, with a, a program that, that gave you the idea of, of how to move on it. I, I think we, we can still pull space out of here. I sent a memo to them that talked about, we could also squeeze this two feet. Well, there, there's another what? Two hundred feet out of the building. They squeezed stuff out lengthwise, they could still squeeze. Just, just look, look, look at these dimensions. Do we need six feet? Do we need six feet? No. But do we need it in these areas on the other side that, that we're involved in too? I, I think there are more cuts that could be made. I can get this down to fourteen-five, but that's not my, my thesis at this point. I'm saying fifteen-five, fifteen-nine, I'm comfortable with it. My question is, there are little things that just don't seem to work yet. But with the design development end of this, they may be putting this together very carefully. You know, I, I wonder, I've never seen an elevator machine room this big. They're usually six by eight, that's almost ten by ten. Why? Let's make the, the, the storage areas adjacent bigger. You don't need that kind of space. It's, there's other equipment in there, which by code we can't have. You know, that's all in boggern. And the question is, Arthur raised it, is there enough room for the, the hot water generating equipment, the boiler? Where's the boiler gonna go, if you go through this process? There's a boiler, there's a, you have electric, you have sprinkler, you have other systems in here. But to, to go from a requirement of eight hundred square foot mechanical to two hundred and seventy square feet, I, I think is pushing it to the hill. But if we can capture more of that electric machine room, I think we, we have, we have a game going.
All right, thanks, Dick. So on, on the bigger picture, and I, I wrote down, there's probably about twelve or fourteen items that Dick brought up. I don't wanna have a back and forth on, on a point-to-point, from a design professional head that I'm hearing it. Some things I just don't agree with, some things I'm seeing the architect shaking their head, no, and. A little bit about process, this is, if numbers change and windows change, that's part of the design development. So I think we're all trying to get to the right thing, to the, to the same place. I'm hesitant, and it's not my call, but when you're saying, you know, I can sit down with Drayton and, and work it out. There's a building committee that we appointed to work on this. If you can work with them, or against them, with them, side by side, I'd rather you work with them to get those answers. You know, do we need two stairways to get to the second floor? It's a simple answer, I think, yes, but you're bringing it up, it is probably a simple question. But we can't afford to go back and forth at the selectmen's table with the permanent building committee biting their tongue right now, and then everyone go off all heated. One thing I'll say, the, the one comment that stuck with me that you made, Dick? that I'll take exception to, and I think everyone at this room will take exception to, is when you say, we can fudge the numbers any way we want. Those things leave this room and, and they take a life of its own. If there's anyone that's fudging numbers, I'd like to know about it. That, that kind of comment is uncalled for and, and it's not helping the situation. You're a design professional, you're an architect. That's one thing that just doesn't have any room in this discussion. So if there's something like that going on, I'd want to know about it. If not, please retract it and work with the group. Because we, we, we've spent a lot of time, the meetings with the planning board, the neighbors, the, you know, every committee to get to this point. And to say something like that sets us back a couple of months easily. So just please be cautious of that. As far as moving forward, you know, we'll, I think we've got enough information now. I think we've got a few things that we've got to think about. If, um, if we have questions, I guess independently, um, email Bill and you can get the answers to. But unless there's any other question that you want to do the closing, if you want to respond to anything?
No, I, I, I feel it's very important that I at least respond to just a couple of Dick's points. First of all, his cost estimate, where we're supposedly not including any of the $2 million fees, every single one of those is in our cost estimates and our proposals in front of you, except for the furniture and fixture. Randy can speak to why that was done that way and it was done that way over a year and a half ago in its concept. So our numbers include every bit of what he's talking about. The asbestos abatement, which he says is not in our number, is division two, existing conditions. Asbestos abatement remediation is $50,000, site demolition $76,000, building demolition $93,000. We have taken great care to make sure that our numbers are accurate and are reflecting what this building is going to cost us to, to move forward with. We are double checking. I mean, three groups have checked the cost estimators numbers to make sure things made sense and that everything was included. LLB can tell you that I'm on the phone with them, constantly looking at every square foot and why it's adjusted from one place to another and making sure that it's all reflecting the original numbers that we've been dealing with. So his, his information on the cost side, I take great exception to it because it does not match what you've been given, which is fully detailed in the cost estimates that you received as part of your package. So I'm glad you're taking the week because you can read through them and you'll see that, that information is there. The front entrance way, Dick was involved with actually extending the front entrance way in the site, um, site plan review process or the downtown review process. It was one of his comments that it was not prominent enough and they clombed onto it. And basically that's why the front entrance way is a little bit larger. And my final, you know, note on this whole thing is that we hired a professional architectural firm that we are paying good money for their resources, for their knowledge and for their skill set in dealing with our building inspector to, to do things, to code. And I have all the faith in the world that when it comes to these stairways and, you know, window lines and stuff like that, that they will all be reflected, reflected appropriately. It is not unusual though, as you see in the library, that a stairway does go by a window at times in buildings. It's not maybe what you want to be, but I'm not even saying that's what's in this building. But I'm saying, you know, we hired an architectural firm to do this. They're charged with it. It's not, you know, for me to redesign their building. We question everything. We go through the, the different issues and we do take input and we have from Dick and others as we, as we move forward here. The, you know, even the example of the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Hall, if you guys all remember, we had five plans we brought in front of you. One had the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Hall to the side, but it just didn't work with the site. So everything that, that's being brought up and, and brought up again and again, we have taken very strong care to make sure that we're looking at.
Thank you. Randy, did you want to add on some of the finance?
I'll be brief. I won't be here next week, so I just wanted to share this data point. In any event, with the current iteration that Bill has presented tonight, it's about a million, 65,000 more than the amount that we had originally planned to borrow and had built into our financial plans. However, given the, all of the careful planning we've done over the last four years to make room for the debt service for this project within the budget, without doing that exclusion, so therefore without raising taxes and with all of the other options that we have available to us with our capital stabilization fund and our healthy free cash balance, I'm highly confident that even with this current iteration that Bill has articulated, that we can finance this project.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy while he's here, since he's not going to be here next week?
Enjoy your vacation.
That's actually just a concept.
Thank you. Anyone else? You want to, any final thoughts?
Well, just, my final thoughts are that I think it's a great job by everyone. Do, I do appreciate, um, everyone's feedback and, you know, even, even Dick's comments. I, I do appreciate because it's important that we, we're inclusive in, in, in looking at everybody's concerns and issues. I, I'm inclined to agree that the additional space is needed. You know, that, that the 700 square feet additional cost is, is really a short, a short money in the long term. $150,000 more. Over a, over an, over an $8 million project, I think it would be foolish if we didn't do it. I think the, um, design is, is, is a great design. I think that a lot of careful thought has gone into it. I think Drayton and his team have done a terrific job of, of responding to the concerns that we've had. I went back to him with, with Randy and with, and with Bill and, and talked to them a few weeks ago and, and, you know, indicated that, you know, the numbers, the square footage numbers just weren't going to work. And so we had them go back and, and made some changes, which really made sense and, and they reflected in the plans you see tonight. So I'm pleased with what they've done and, and I, and I'm supportive of where they're at at this point.
Thank you. Okay, so there's no other questions, comments, anyone from the audience?
I just, I just want to say, we can keep kicking this can down the road time and time again. It's only getting more expensive. So I thi, I think we're at a point where, you know, we've got a, we've got a plan that maybe some tweaks here and there through design development can be cleaned up. But I think at, at this point, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with where we're at and where we're headed, so.
Bill, are you available on the 18th, next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put this on the agenda and we'll.
Chairman, just get Dave's, your thoughts on the, on the additional square footage? What are you, what are your thoughts on that?
Oh, I, I said earlier on that I think with the, I'm okay taking the basement up, but I think the additional 750 square feet is, is important. Especially up on the second floor where you do have the counters back to back. Two people, that's another three feet on either side. It's, it's going to get tight. So you don't want, you don't want people working on top of each other.
Okay, thank you. So there's nothing else on our agenda, so do I have a motion to close the public meeting?
A motion to close the selectmen's meeting.
Second. Motion made second, all in discussion, all is in favor? Okay, thank you all, appreciate it.